Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council this Thursday of October. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Everyone can please. Thank you. Read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the county is situated on the traditional land of the Alnashasabey with a longstanding relationship with land and water throughout the region. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse indigenous and Matias and Inuit people who call us territory home. As a candidate, we have the responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land in which we live and work. Okay, if you have pecuniary interest, you can disclose that now or as we go along in our meeting. Confirmation of the agenda, we do have some additions. I'll let Tyler handle you.
Thank you. So through the warden, some additions to today's agenda. Under item 5.2, we're going to be doing an installation of councillor. Item 5.3, we'll look at the appointments to committees. And item 14, we want to adding those items, which is a matter pertaining to legal advice, CAO. So it would be the three additions.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a motion that the October 3rd, 2024 agenda be approved as amended with those three additions. Approved by councillor Orr, second by councillor Trunkowski. Favor. Carried. Okay. Next item is we're going to.
Installation of.
Castall. For a moment.
Do you want me to say something beforehand, or? Okay. Good?
Good. Hi, Robert Wilhelm. Having been elected or appointed to the office of councillor in the municipality of the county of Perth, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully and partially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a base, a biased, corrupt or any improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and I will, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is in the same force and effect as if I made it under oath.
Okay. All right. And next, next item of business, we have some appointments that we need to do as well. So I have a motion here that council appoint councillor Stu Orr to the following committees during the absence of councillor Jim Aitchison, and that is the Perth County Agricultural Working Group, the Plant and Services Review Working Group, the Community Transportation Steering Committee, and that council also appoint councillor Robert Wilhelm to the following committees during the absence of councillor Jim Aitchison, and that is the Land Division Committee. So I need to move, or in a second for that? Move by deputy warden Callum, second by councillor McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move on to our consent agenda, and we have one to six items on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like pulled, or they have questions on? Councillor Smith?
6.7.
Okay. Councillor.
I have three this morning. Warden Nagget's 6.16, 6.18, and 6.19.
Is there anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items 6.16 to 6.18 with the exceptions of 6.17, 6.16, 6.18, and 6.19, and approves as September 5, 2024, council minutes.
Just one, remember to 6.7, 6.16, 6.18, and 6.19.
6.7, 16, 18, and 19. Okay, we need to move in a second for that. Move by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Smith. All in favor? Carried. Okay, councillor Smith, you first.
Yeah, six, thanks. Through the warden, 6.7, looking for support from the South Central Economic Development Corporation regards to their transit, similar to ours with, in report, item 9.3, in whichever form that is, like to maybe perhaps support that somehow. It looks like they did send this to the province and some other surrounding counties. So yeah, looking like we should support that, meaning as funding for that stops in March of 2025.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Councillor Casonberg? You need to read that mention now.
Yeah, so through the warden, they did supply a resolution. If you like, I could read it out. It is a part of the consent package as well, but I can certainly read it out if you might. But it is part of the consent package, it is in our template that is there. Please read it.
Need to read it out, so. Okay? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, councillor Casonberg?
Thank you, Warden Nagget. Three issues this morning that caught my attention as I was reading the package. First item, 6.16, the township of Hilliard responding to a note, I guess, from the township of Tweed has suggested that perhaps the province should absorb responsibility for open funding of rural community policing. And that does seem like a rather intriguing idea at this point, one that we perhaps shouldn't lend our voice to on this occasion. Policing certainly is becoming a very significant cost to municipal governments, as I think we all know. In North Perth, it's accounting for more than 10% of our municipal budget at this point in time. And so the consequence of the notion of the province absorbing financial responsibility for this level of policing does seem appealing, especially in an era where so many things have been downloaded our way. It would be lovely to see something uploaded their way. So I would like to move that we issue a letter of support for the action proposed by the township of Hilliard, but it looks like it was in response to something from the township of Tweed, so perhaps they can finesse this for us in an appropriate way and send copies to the relevant stakeholders, which I assume would include our Member of Provincial Parliament and other various councils in our area.
Okay, do we have a second? Councillor Mackenzie? Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried.
Thank you. Second one is starting to feel a little more personal. I think we've thought perhaps that our communities are exempt from a lot of action on this reneviction idea that seems to have emerged largely in the major urban centres over the last several years. But certainly I know a family in this world that recently was renevicted, and so it feels, as I said, a little personal. The city of Kitchener, in their request to the province, suggested that the province strengthen various provisions. Some of those actually look familiar because they have been already done in British Columbia, and it does sort of seem like there's some movement to try to stall or slow this reneviction trend that is out there. I'm certainly interested in seeing this council having a voice on this subject matter, and I think the city of Kitchener has well articulated the arguments and the potential changes that could be made in various laws and regulations for the purposes of deterring renivictions that are of some malicious intent, which, you know, there are, it would appear in the province some that are happening with that intent. So I'd like to send, suggest that we support this, the letter, again, to the usual suspects, if the clerk can document who those are, that supports the city of Kitchener's call for the province to take some action to tighten that framework so that people aren't unfairly and unreasonably renevicted from their dwellings, especially in today's market. It is said that if you are a low-income individual and are renevicted today, that you will very likely not get back into the housing market and wind up living unsheltered.
Okay, do we have a second? Councillor Trunkowski? Is there any more comments or questions from the members? Oh, all in favor? Carried. Okay, and your third item?
Thank you. It interests me that I took the opportunity, in fact, to read the ombudsman's annual report, and I did take note of a number of stories and case scenarios that were presented by the ombudsman in that report that certainly by name called out municipalities that had had infractions. And fair enough, you know, if there are municipalities that are acting in ways that are inconsistent with the municipal act or other guiding legislation, perhaps they need to be called out, and perhaps that's exactly the role that we expect of the ombudsman. But it did intrigue me that there was a letter in our package today submitted by T. Valley, but Peterborough was also involved as a predecessor to that, that asked for a little bit of procedural fairness in this. They wanted it to be made apparent that when they were going to be named in the ombudsman's report annually, that they were, they had the opportunity and the right to hear about it before it showed up in print. And to me, that makes a whole lot of sense. If you're a municipality and the ombudsman has interacted with you and finds that there are some issues, procedural or otherwise, certainly before your municipality's name and story is winding up in that report, it makes a certain amount of sense to be advised that that is the intent of the ombudsman's office, and allow that municipality to ask a few questions about things. And it does seem that there's a matter of procedural fairness here that perhaps we should be concerned about for all municipalities, and therefore I suggest we send a letter of support on this matter as well. Again, the usual suspects, I'm sure the clerk can help us with that, but to suggest that it is important when the ombudsman is weighing in and working on files associated with our municipality and intends to name those in the report that we have, at least the advantage of being notified ahead of time.
Okay, do we have a second? Councillor McDermott? Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Okay, we're going to move under our public meetings here in delegations. We do have a presentation this morning, and with us we have Steve Dolson from the Huron Perth Agriculture Science Centre, asking for financial support. So welcome, Mr. Dolson, if you'd like to come up to the table here. And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Warden Fairgoodts. It is indeed a pleasure for me to join you this morning to make a presentation on behalf of the Huron Perth Ag Science Centre, which I had taken on the role of chair of the Board of Directors this past spring. I believe a couple of years ago, our previous chair, Jill Lewis, has made a presentation to you at the onset of the development of the Science Centre group. And we're, we've been working diligently since 2020, when the feasibility study was first prepared, to further develop our board and become the not-for-profit organisation with terrible status. And today, what I want to share with you in the next 10 minutes will be presenting our case for why we need an ag science centre, first of all. Secondly, why it should be in Perth County. And finally, how you can help us bring Canada's first agricultural science centre right here in Perth. Agriculture unites all Canadians every day through the food we grow as farmers and the food we eat. However, most consumers today have never been further removed from the practices and realities of modern agriculture. Few of them have a grandparent or a relative where they can go visit a farm close to home. Southwestern Ontario is the most diverse and productive ag region in Canada. We are located within two hours of the GTA, the largest urban population in Canada, in a time when their interest in bringing, in buying local is at an all-time high. That sounds pretty good, and yet we have many challenges. As farmers today, we're routinely using state-of-the-art technology. Our industry needs to fill jobs with employees trained to handle modern technology. Today's precision agriculture has created many new career possibilities. We need to expose more of our youth to these exciting opportunities. There are currently four jobs for every graduate out of the University of Wales Agricultural Programs. At times, modern agriculture is perceived to be only conducted by massive factory firms, while in reality, 97% of farms in Ontario are family-owned. Other challenges that we face revolve around food safety. Food safety is critical to the health and success of every farm, and yet the public perception can be negative, as a portion of the public fear purchasing products grown using conventional agricultural methods. As a result, our industry has adapted to producing products that they think they need being organic, non-GMO-type products, and so on. Other challenges as livestock producers, we have additional challenges. Consumers today are concerned about animal welfare, the manure we are spreading on the land, the methane our ruminants are producing, supposedly causing more climate change. They don't realise we rely on a healthy ecosystem and healthy livestock to be sustainable. What has occurred as a result is a desire for antibiotic-free products, free-range products. All of these things have evolved to meet their expected needs. Today, farms are highly productive enterprises, employing cutting-edge technology, as many of you know. Software programs and scientific analytics are used on a daily basis at our own farm. We have robots milking the cows and other robots making sure the feed gets to them, and the baby calves are also on robotic feeding, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days of the year. And now we have to be connected to those robots by our phones all the time. In my pocket today, if something goes wrong, I'm buzzed. At 3:00 in the morning, if something goes wrong, we're woke up to go make sure that the animals are cared for properly. I could go on and on about meeting the needs of every animal, every day is the goal for today's livestock farmers, and that is not shared very well with the public. The public in general still have the stereotype of a farmer as they were in the early 20th century with the straw hat, the benchfork, and it's a lot of work, they know, but they don't understand modern agriculture. So from this point forward, how do we address all these conflicting realities? First, collaboration matters. To bridge the gap in public understanding of agriculture in Ontario, we need to enhance collaborative efforts. Organisations like Farm and Food Care and AgScape are already making strides in this area. Establishing an ag science centre would provide a dedicated space for the ag and agri-food industry to engage with the public year-round, showcasing the vital work that's being done. Second factor on the screen is fun matters. To spark greater curiosity about agriculture, we should create engaging, family-friendly learning opportunities. Interactive exhibits and hands-on activities can make learning about agriculture enjoyable and memorable, encouraging repeat visitors and deeper engagement. And finally, contacts matters. To truly appreciate the essence of farming in Ontario, these educational experiences should be situated in the heart of agricultural activity, not on the 401, not in a gravel pit, but in Perth County, which is a rich farming landscape. It is the ideal location. By moving beyond urban settings and immersing visitors in the agricultural environment, we can offer a more authentic and impactful experience. We can use this hub to take people to actual farms. We will be their link. We could replace grandpa and grandma and cousins out on the farm when they don't have those contacts anymore. The Ag Science Centre will be Canada's first, Canada's first, I'm saying, informal learning centre dedicated to modern agriculture. It is not a museum. This will be about today's agriculture and where it is headed. This photo shows a little girl in a demonstration cab where the screen can change to another crop in a facility in the US. These are the types of things that we would like to put in our ag centre. The Ag Science Centre will be a place where our community can celebrate the important role our industry is contributing to our county, our province, and our country. We're currently planning for the centre to be located in North Perth, and we've been working with the North Perth Economic Development Committee as we develop our plans. A dedicated location is greatly needed, and it's needed soon, to encourage local businesses to provide the needed funding to progress with our project. Who's at four? Well, recent, the most recent study we had done last winter suggested over 70,000 people would attend the facility in the early years on an annual basis. Our mission as an organisation is to inspire youth and adults alike to discover the exciting future of agriculture and food through interactive and immersive experiences and programmes. So yes, we expect families, we expect schools, we expect teachers, and we want the ag industry there so that the younger people can see the opportunities beyond what their mum and dad or their grandparents' farm was like in the past. Capital cost, this is always the scary part. It has been updated. We, the original feasibility study was done in 2020. At that time, they provided us a quote of around 13.8 million plus development costs, development costs pre-capital costs. We have now found to be around 2.5 million, so that original building would have been slightly over 16 million back in 2020 figures. Today, the updated figures have changed. Our consultants, Jennifer Martin, who had been heavily involved in starting a science centre in Calgary from its inception, is now doing consulting and did this project for us last winter, and they stated that the building size that was being recommended in the original study for Huron and Perth wasn't probably big enough for what we want to demonstrate for all of agriculture. Our industry is much bigger than the 20,000 square feet, so they're recommending a 34,000 square foot building, and with that came additional size of the building and all the exhibits within it, bringing the total cost projected to 38 million. That's very comparable to a facility that was built in Wisconsin for just over 40 million recently and opened in last December. So just to give you an idea of where that ranks. The original smaller building today, if we were able to gain the funding to build it, would be slightly over 20 million as opposed to the 16 I talked about earlier. So how can you help? Our latest study, which was conducted last winter, also talked about the development costs and what we needed to do before we actually start the capital campaign. So we have not gone out and said the capital campaign's here, this is our target, yet, because we have work to do. $38 million project requires a decent amount of money spent upfront to make sure we have our ducks in a row and have a good plan going forward. So process curiosity, from the, we had reviewed the feasibility study, has indicated that we need $550,000 roughly to enhance our concept drawings and develop the experience planning needed as well as fundraising support. So what does all that mean? The funding will cover experience planning for exhibits and program themes, which will then support the architectural modelling. We've had a local business provide us an earlier concept drawing for the facility at the 20,000 square foot stage, which is fine if that's where we're going, but it did not lend itself to phase two or an expansion down the road to meet the larger scale that this facility could become. So that's one of the reasons we need to advance the architectural modelling, and people want to know a little bit more about what it's going to look like inside as well before we go to the capital campaign. So that's two of the big pieces of that funding that's needed out of the 550. There's also fundraising consultation that is needed before we start the capital campaign, and that involves a feasibility study and a strategic plan for the fundraising committee. We have committees established, a fundraising committee, a business development committee, and an outreach committee, all of which are just rolling, but we're sitting at the stage of needing to obtain funding to do some of the upfront work before we can start the capital campaign. So what are we asking of you in Perth County? We're seeking a contribution of $50,000 to help support this $550,000 expense. Your support will significantly enhance our appeal to neighbouring counties, which we intend to follow up with and make our collective effort more impactful. So that is our presentation for today. We've pared it down quite a bit because to fit it into 10 minutes is a challenge for such a big project. We are expecting to go to private businesses and in North Perth, well, in Perth County, predominantly later this fall to also support this $550,000 need. So we're looking for municipal support of Perth to start with. North Perth has made it possible and to assist us. Jessica Deetner is with me today. She's an admin assistant that we've been able to contract on an hourly basis, just to provide our group of volunteers, so we're entirely governed by a group of volunteers that are keen on the project and really excited about what it can do for agriculture in a time when agriculture is not being recognised as land use, as you know, is being looked at, what the wants are versus the needs. And I think we need. And I think we need to get the message across to people in making policy that good excellent farmland needs to be preserved, and there are lots of other areas that can be developed that don't have to take away that good farmland. So, okay, thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Councilor Kellam?
Yes, sir, Warden. Thanks, Mr Wilson, for that report. It sounds like it's going to be a fantastic project. You keep mentioning Perth, Perth, of course. You do have Huron-Porth Ag Centre, so I assume you're going to Huron County as well?
Yep.
And I assume once you get rolling with your requests for support, you'll be going to the federal government, provincial government, all those other entities, is that correct?
Absolutely. This is not simply a Huron-Porth centre. This will be Ontario's Agri-Food Discovery Centre is what we're focusing on down the We would like to think that other provinces across Canada would have a similar centre evolve as well, but we want it to be Ontario's centre. It happened to be the Huron-Porth idea, the charitable organisation that was formed is a Huron-Porth organisation structure. And I think over time, the realisation is the volunteer group, the ideas and the desire of Perth to be an agricultural hub is strong, but it is a much bigger project than just Huron-Porth. So we will be focusing on using our leverage to access national farm and business organisations to support this centre. These kind of dollars, we're not expecting to all come out of our Huron-Porth community. It is a much bigger centre than that that we are creating. And it should be, if we go back to 1952 and the first idea of Stratford Festival came to Stratford, it's become much bigger than that over time, but that's not how you start. But we have an issue in agriculture that we have to highlight the importance of ag to Ontario, and this is a time to do it. Thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Warden Kellam?
Yes, sir, Warden. Thank you, Steve, for your presentation. I'd just like to make a comment that we refer this to budget for discussion, the $50,000.
Okay. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thanks, Warden. Ag is through you again. Steve, thank you for an excellent presentation. And I had, I guess, a two-part question, but it focuses on endorsements and support. Wondering firstly, if you've received any endorsements or comments or reactions from the general farm organisations, be it OFA, Federation of Agriculture, National Farmers' Union or the Christian Farmers?
Yeah.
Have you received any feedback or?
We have not made presentations as yet to those organisations at a provincial or national level. We have been working with Federation of Ag in Huron and Perth, so we've involved them in the studies that were done. And I had the opportunity to meet with the OFA leaders networking session in August, which they basically had representatives from all those organisations in Orangeville one evening, and I was able to bring up the project to them at that time. We have not gone to them yet. In a lot of cases, what I was producing on the screen, we're trying to get our ducks in a row to be prepared to do that. Having Jessica now as a staff person helping us prepare for those meetings and presentations is instrumental to doing it right. We have had good rapport to say that they think it's a good idea. Beyond that, our funding to date, the original project was a $50,000 trillion foundation grant. Since that time, the Grand River Ag Society has provided us $25,000 trillion mutual insurance, another 11,000. We got another 10,000 from the Ag and Water Festival that is disbanded. So we have, and North Perth has provided some support to help us with administrative costs over the recent, just started in August. So, I mean, we have about $140,000 invested in the project to date without it being on mainstream promotion, of which is in our plans. Business Development Committee, we really want the concept drawings updated so that that will be a time that we will likely come out with the new name for the facility in a public manner. I mean, I guess I'm public now, but in a lesser way, we realise that it is a much bigger facility than strictly a Huron-Porth initiative. We want it to attract people out of the GTA, out of, in that two-hour radius is often these facilities draw from. I know people in our own community go to Science North. I mean, that's not two hours, that's a lot further away, and they like to go more than once, once the family's been there once, it's, they're great attractions, they support the STEM learning processes, and so we're excited about it. It's a concept that has been looked at 20 years ago, according to Janet Horner. I don't know if any of you know Janet, but she is currently the chair of the Heritage Park in Milton, and that they're struggling to get people to go see old stuff in agriculture. We need to display what's actually happening out there. And it's an additional, as we said earlier, additional piece to what's being done well by Agscape and Farmer Food Care Ontario. And both of those organisations probably have been receiving approximately half a million dollars on an annual basis from industry, predominantly ag industry farm groups. And we would hope that this facility is going to do the same thing too, because those businesses need the employees that need to come out of the future in technology. I mean, you get in the tractor today with the three screens in there and try and, I throw out my hands and say, let the young guy do that. Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Kowalski?
As a follow-up through you, Warden, I, yeah, I can appreciate wanting to reach out to different segments of the population and to do something for the next generation in the ag industry. So I guess kind of a segue, and you hinted at it a little bit, that ag producer groups locally and provincially, like what's their, what's been their comments, like dairy, pork, poultry, beef, grain farmers Ontario, have you had any contact with them yet to get their thoughts or still working on that?
One of our directors has, she is not with Grain Farmers of Ontario anymore, a recent grad out of Ridgeton, so they were familiar with the project, thought it was a great idea. This is what we're hearing a lot about. Most of the organisations are, when you're ready for the capital campaign, come to us. This is the hard part. The hard part is getting the funding to do the planning. The general feel out there is, great idea, come to us then, and when you're ready for the capital campaign. And we're trying to get through that hurdle. And that's in the past year, in applications to various foundations that give funding, we often don't meet criteria, and the criteria specifically might be for our facility or our programme, but for the planning process, that's been our challenge right at the moment. So general acceptance of the concept has been positive. The desire for what's going to be in there, they want to know what all is going to be in the facility. We're also working closely now that there's an ag specialist at North Perth with that individual and economic development, assessing what other needs of that community are in agriculture. I know we've talked with business on the edge of Wingham in the seed industry that are also wanting to be involved as well. So it's been very positive, but again, we haven't, we haven't drummed the drum very loud yet.
So you need concept drawings and?
We really do.
Things of that nature to take to a presentation and say, here, here's what we're talking about, here's what it's going to look like, and both of those.
To do it properly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kowalski?
I echo Deputy Warden Kellam's suggestion that we resolve. We actually have a motion to refer this to a budget planning process for the county.
Yeah, there's no more questions? Read the motion. Okay, we have a motion that receives a presentation here in Perth, Agricultural Science Centre, financial support for information, and that we refer the request for $50,000 to our budget deliberations. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, seconded by Counselor Duncan, all in favour. Okay. Thank you for coming this morning. We appreciate all the information you gave us. Thanks for the opportunity. You're welcome. Enjoy the rest of the day. Okay, we're going to move now to staff reports. The first report we have is under Planning Services, and it's a quarter two planning division update. And with us this morning is Andrea.
Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Good morning and thank you. So the first report that I was going to present to council is just basically our Q2 update on the planning division. And so what I've provided here is, I've provided a snapshot of the current number of planning applications that we have received to date for 2024, and then I've shown you as a comparison what we've, what we have received to date as of 2023. And so you can see we're up slightly by six applications across the municipalities. And then I provided an overview of the types of applications that we're receiving, just so you could have an understanding of, understanding of the complexity of applications. And so as you can see, the majority of the applications that we're receiving are for zoning bylaw amendments. I can't help but think that once we get four new zoning bylaws, that that might, that number may go down, which would be fantastic. And then we also are very high still on consent, and I would say that the majority of them, and some of the Land Division committee members could speak to this too, but the majority are for surplus firm dwelling severances. And so I think that's just, we're still playing catch-up from historically having more stringent rules around surplus firm dwelling severances, and so they still continue to come forward on a regular basis. And we still have, we are, have a lower number of draft plans of subdivisions, official plan amendments, there's five to date. They are, I have to say, although there are only five, it's, they are fairly time-consuming, the amount of time that staff spend on pre-consultations, and then there's generally a significant amount of research that goes into it. I know that a number of you have been dealing with some recent official plan amendments and draft plans of subdivisions, and you know how complex they are. And so that's, that's taking a considerable amount of staff's time. We are wondering too if the official plan numbers would potentially go down again as we get a new official plan. However, I suspect that any official plan amendments that we would receive going forward once we have a new official plan is they would be fairly complex as well. And so I do know there was question at one point in time earlier in the year about having major minor official plan amendments, and I really don't think that we'll come across those minor types of official plan amendments going forward. And then, so I covered a bit too that despite the high volume of planning applications, they're complex, there's also a number of tire kickers, so we receive, we spend a lot of time on pre-consultations and then they don't go anywhere. As councils likely familiar, the province has removed the mandatory requirement for pre-consultations. So when that mandatory requirement came into effect, a number of municipalities started to charge fees for pre-consultation, the process. But since that has been removed, we have not pursued that any further in terms of establishing a fee or whatnot. Our objective is to get people in the door, do the pre-consultation, because we think it would save us time down the road when they actually submit an application. It should be more full and complete at that point in time. And then I also did a calculation recently based on the number of hours that staff felt there was a survey done in 2023 that staff put together the number of hours that they're spending per application, and based on the number of development planners that we have, and I'm not suggesting that we hire more, that's not where I was going, but it's, it looks as though they're spending, I think it was 108% of their time processing planning applications. And so there's, right now we have four development planners, and we have one contract development planner who will be finished at the end of December. And we also had a summer student that did a significant amount of work. I'm sure you met her at some of your council meetings. So that was, that was great to have her. And then for council's information, we recently signed a contract, a five-year contract with Toronto Metropolitan University. And so we have students coming to us, and they get a credit at the end of the semester, but they come to us for 14 hours a week. And so we've been able to put those students towards some of the policy work supporting Moira. So that's been a great opportunity as well, and it's at no cost. The county, they come for free. So it's, it's a great program, and I actually would love to take more of their students if I could. So in addition to the planning projects in terms of development planning, we've been working on, and I'm sure you've noticed, we've been working on developing standard report templates, and so council can quickly look through a report and you know where the meat of the report is and what the important stuff is that you're looking for. If you feel that our reports are lengthy, the idea is that if we have an appeal, the planners should be able to walk into a hearing, holding the report, and they have all the evidence they need in their report instead of just a brief overview, and they have to do all the work after the appeal. The other thing too is that we've been working to update all our public notices. I'm sure you've seen also that we use different signs, county uses different signs. We also have QR codes on those signs, and the long-term plan is that we're working with communications and clerks to establish a new webpage where we would, you could hold your phone up to the QR code and it would take you to that webpage, and then you could see the planning app, or sorry, the public notice for the, for the planning applications. You should be able to see if there's proposed building elevations, concept plans, draft plans of subdivisions, and then any related studies. We do get lots of requests for studies associated with development applications, and so this would help to, you know, level or add a level of, a higher level of transparency to the public, but then also potentially reduce staff time in trying to send those out all the time as well. So that's something else that we have in the works. And then from a policy planning perspective, as you all know, we have our biggest, most noteworthy project is the official plan, and we feel that after the two open houses that we hosted in July, that we are in decent shape. We've been in close communication with the province as well in light of the new PPS that has just come out to ensure that our policies are consistent with the PPS. And so that has taken a considerable amount of time, but we feel that it's, it's definitely paying off, and we're feeling very positive about the statutory public meeting that we'll be hosting on October 17th for the official plan. And then with that, once, as we've talked about before, once the official plan is, is on its way to the province, we are hoping to shift our focus to four new zoning bylaws, as well as the first step too will be the housekeeping amendments, which many of your municipal staff have been asking for, and so those should be coming to council shortly. And that will help us to get by in the interim while we work on the. And that will help us to get by in the interim while we work on the the next four zoning bylaws. And then we also have undertaken official plan consolidations. So we're all caught up. So when you look on your official plan online, you'll see that we've consolidated every single official plan amendment that's been done in the last number of years. And so that's all up to date, as well as the the four zoning bylaw consolidations have all been completed, which is which was a big task. Those are both big tasks because they they hadn't been done in a little while. And so it was it was important that they were done. And then I've noted here too that as time allows, we are taking on we're undertaking ongoing projects, including updating and improving planning applications so that we can see more fulsome and complete submissions. And then I already touched on on the planning application webpage that we're creating, and then the housekeeping amendments. And then the last thing that we are have been working on is is cloud permit. And I believe council approved a budget request for cloud permit, which is an online portal for planning applications. Many of your municipalities already use cloud permit for your building permit submissions. And so we are looking at or we're working on establishing a a planning module through cloud permit. And so that is ongoing as well. And so in light of that, that is our my Q two report. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions on the report? Councilor Kowalski?
Thanks, Warden, through you. Thanks, Andrea, for the update. Just curious on the, I guess, the timing of processing the applications, whether it's plan amendments or plan of subdivision. Has there been any? I'm thinking about outside agencies that have to weigh in with comments. Has there been any significant delays attributed to waiting for outside agencies to comment? Or what's what's been your department's experience lately on that front?
So through the warden to Councilor Trankowski's question. So I would say that one thing that we set in place is is we were having, we weren't always receiving conservation authority comments on time. So what we've done is we've pushed back the circulation process. And so we do it basically upon arrival of the application. Instead of waiting, at one point, staff were waiting for the public notice to go and then sending out the agency circulation. So basically, day one, the application is deemed, it goes out. And so now we have been getting those those comments on time from the conservation authorities. So there's no complaints there. You'll generally see in reports, we have hydro one comments, they generally come in. Blue water recycling generally comes in. I would say that perhaps our biggest challenge would be with some of the ministries providing comments on time. And then sometimes we're facing challenges in that it it feels like we get conflicting direction from ministries and that one ministry is is really wanting, you know, economic development and housing, and then another ministry is not allowing us access onto a road. And so it would be my my complaint politely would be that if they could collaborate more, and we could have those comments early on, and we could work with them as as a, you know, a unified front, then potentially we could, you know, achieve or get more success with development proposals that everyone's more comfortable with too.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we have a motion that council receives quarter two planning division update report for information. Moved by Councilor Wilhelm, second by Councilor McDermott, all in favor. Okay, and the next report is the provincial planning statement.
Hey, thank you. I'm actually unfortunately, Moira could not be here today, so I am presenting this on on her behalf. And so she has provided council with a fulsome overview of the new changes to the provincial, it's now called the planning statement, 2024. I may call it provincial policy statement, so I apologize in advance. And maybe just to be safe, I might just talk about the PPS. And so generally speaking, the the overall intent from what we're seeing in terms of the province introducing, you know, the ten the new 10 bills over the past three years, and then the, I think this is the third version of the PPS that we have received, this final and third version. And I call it final because there is no real commenting period involved with it. And just basically, it was issued on August 20th, and it comes into effect on October 20th. And so we are obligated to any planning decisions going forward as of October 20th are required to be consistent with this new PPS. And so where I was going with that is that generally speaking, all of these changes that we've been seeing provincially are an intent to achieve more housing. And so as everyone knows, housing is has been on the forefront for a couple of years now. We are are told that we're in a housing crisis. And the vision for the PPS is that we build 1.5 million new homes by 2031. So I can I can say that a lot of the the policies around housing, there are more stringent policies for larger, faster growing urban centers, but that doesn't mean that they also don't apply to somewhere like Perth County. And so they may not be as stringent, but definitely a lot of the wording has changed around. I think before it was encouraging, and now it's establishing and implementing. And so those are much stronger words than we've seen in the past. And so I think I'm okay, so I I think I've I've covered the the overall vision. And then specifically, we have identified the specific areas which we feel are the most noteworthy and most would potentially have the most impact on Perth County. And so the first one is with respect to settlement area expansions. And so this new PPS removes requirement for municipal comprehensive reviews, which was previously the only method available to municipalities to add land to settlement areas. And so then with no requirement for comprehensive reviews, settlement area expansions can happen at any time. And further to that, there's no limit on the ability of landowners, private landowners, to apply to municipalities for such expansions. And then in addition to that, there is an expanded appeal right for these. So if, for example, a private landowner applies to amend, sorry, to expand a settlement area, council decides that it is not in our best interest, they can appeal that to the O L T. So that said, there are still tests. They're not as stringent as they had been before with respect to the municipal comprehensive review requirement, but there are still tests that are required in order to support a settlement area expansion, and they include that there's a need for additional land, capacity and infrastructure, and public service facilities, phasing, avoidance of primary agricultural areas, and and also consideration for M D S. So those are generally comparable to what's already been in place and and what council is used to seeing. So in the action item that we've identified is that in response to this removal, we may face more private development applications to expand settlement areas. And I mean, they can come at any time. And so with respect to the official plan review, we did get several requests. In some cases, we didn't feel that they were appropriate. In some cases, they were appropriate. And so we we had that ability through the comprehensive review to to potentially allocate those lands or not, but going forward, that that may look much different. And so in light of that, we are suspecting that we may, based on potentially a higher volume of these, it would probably be in our best interest as a planning department to establish a standard process for reviewing and receiving these, and then also establishing, you know, a specific application form that people would fill out that would include a specific checklist also for studies that would be required so that we can ensure that we are addressing those those tests that we have been and we have been given for consideration. The next one is growth and intensification. And so as as I indicated, the vision for the PPS is is new housing. And so a large portion of the PPS has been focused on growth, intensification, and housing related policies. And so the first key change relates to the creation of complete communities and the concept of strategic growth areas being integrated into the into the PPS. And so within these strategic growth areas, they should be the focus of significant population and employment growth. Investment and infrastructure and public service facilities should be prioritized in these areas, and redevelopment and intensification should be supported. And so we generally have taken the approach, we we already established strategic growth areas once we we saw this come out within the official plan mapping. And generally speaking, we the strategic growth areas have been directed to the downtown areas in each of each of the municipalities. And so that's where we had suspected that there would be should be the focus of of growth and development. And I think I think it could be positive in that the PPS is also looking for us to establish complete communities and compact built forms. And so from an economic development standpoint, in our downtowns, we could see that if we're directing growth for those areas, intensification, we could see that some of our businesses may be able to thrive, and we may be able to welcome more businesses into our downtowns. So I I see that as a as a positive change. And then it also doesn't necessarily have an overall impact on existing lower density residential areas. In addition to that, there is there is a call for intensification requiring planning authorities, and this is where I was talking about not encouraging any longer. It's establishing and implementing minimum targets for intensification and redevelopment within built up areas. And so that's that's in order to prevent continuous growth out into our primary agricultural areas. And so there's that, so they are asking that we provide targets for intensification and redevelopment, and that we should also include transitional policies to ensure that there's land use compatibility. And then we're also being encouraged to establish density targets for residents and jobs for gross hectare and designated growth areas. So your designated growth areas are your settlement areas, or sorry, your and and more specifically, generally, your service settlement areas. And then we should also establish phasing policies for infrastructure. And then it also speaks to allocating and reallocating servicing capacities. So I think that goes hand in hand with the 185, with the use it or lose it provisions in that if you have a development that's been approved, they have two years to to build it and and move forward on it. Otherwise, they lose the capacity, the servicing capacity that we've allocated to them. And then with that, we suspect that we suspect that it would be beneficial for us to establish a tracking system, working closely with municipal staff, or ensuring that that each of your area municipalities have established a tracking system for servicing allocation so that we have a good grasp on on what's available, where it's available, and then where we should be directing development. And so I think that's also a key theme that that we've noticed in this new PPS is that there's there's definitely a need for more tracking and more monitoring. And so that also goes for the with the next section that I'm moving into with housing options, affordable housing, and additional residential units. And so the new PPS is asking that planning authorities establish and implement minimum housing targets, including the provision of housing that is affordable to low and moderate income households in coordination with our service managers. Planning for housing to address the full range of housing options for the county shall also be undertaken in coordination with our housing managers. And housing options, when we speak to that, the PPS requires that we provide for all housing options and that the focus be on not only affordable and attainable housing, but also every type of housing, housing type and or form, I should say. And so that would include, for example, townhouses, laneway houses, A R Us, or additional residential units, multi rez buildings. So that might look like stacked townhouses, fourplexes, and then also apartment buildings. And so so in terms of that, we are also being asked again to monitor and track. And so we are suspecting as a the best step forward is to establish a a regular working relationship with the Stratford Social Services Housing Manager to get a good understanding of what types of housing units are out there, what the demand is, and then going forward, how we're addressing those. And then we should be able to report back to council, or if council asks us where we're at with that, we should be able to to provide those numbers. But again, that would be working closely with with our our friends in Stratford to ensure that that we have a good understanding of of our needs and and then what we can provide, and then also encouraging that growth and development in those different areas where we're we're potentially lacking. And then the next segue is into agriculture. And the biggest change is that the province is asking us to take an agriculture systems approach, so much like the natural heritage systems that we've been asked to take in the past, we're being asked to take a similar approach with agricultural systems. I I believe that since I've been here, I believe that Perth County does a very good job in in protecting our agricultural systems. Prime agriculture is is a top priority here. And so I I don't see too many changes occurring that way, but you definitely will see us speaking to that in our reports. And then also, the province then has asked us to require agricultural impact assessments. So for example, if there is some sort of development proposal that comes forward, so settlementary expansions in particular, they would be asked to provide us with an agricultural impact assessment. And so they would be asked specifically to determine what sort of impact they're having on the agricultural system overall. And so not even necessarily with the the direct areas surrounding them, but overall what what that impact could look like. And then other key changes is is now the the province is is referring to principal dwellings as well as farm worker housing as agricultural uses on, sorry, that are associated with agricultural operations. And then with that also, the we are now allowed to have up to two additional residential units on every for every primary dwelling associated with agriculture in the primary cultural area is permitted. And so what that would look like is that you could have a second unit that has to be in house or attached to the primary dwelling. And then the third unit could be in an accessory structure, or it could be a standalone building. So what we've historically referred to as like a garden suite, garden suites were generally temporary in nature, but these could be permanent now. And so the idea there is to allow for not only farm workers, but family members that are associated with the farm operation. There's no requirement that they they work on the farm, but just generally that there's more housing for for family. It could also be used as a rental property or for rental income as well. And then in addition to that, there's there's through, there's the provision now for farm worker housing, and that is in addition to the three residential units that are permitted on on a farm parcel. And then, there's no restrictions around how many farmworker housing units you could have. And so, we are going to try to limit where they are located on a farm and so that they would be generally located. You've already seen policies where we allowed for second dwellings, that they generally be located in the general farmstead area. And so, we would promote that as well to make sure that we're not cutting into prime ag land and, you know, developing sites without agriculture in mind. And so, that's what we would hope to do. And that's something that you'll see trickle down into your zoning bylaws. And then, I think I've covered all that. And then, again, we believe that there should be a tracking tool to identify all these additional residential units so that we can report back to council that, you know, this is how many units we have. This is that we see the uptake in this. Here are potential issues that we see with this or whatnot. Or the positives, because that's potential as well. And then, the next noteworthy change we're seeing is with employment lands. There is a requirement now that there be a 300-meter setback that would basically allow for employment uses to have those normal practices which include odor, noise, vibrations. And so, to keep those sensitive land uses away from those types of industries. And I think, generally speaking, that's to promote those large industry manufacturers that we would be looking to potentially attract to our municipalities. And then, another big change that has come is that we are no longer able to include institutional uses, residential uses, or commercial or office uses in our industrial areas. And so, that has been a change. And the idea though is that those commercial uses would be directed to our downtowns or corridor commercial areas. And so, then we can save our industrial parks for heavier industry. And then, we can ensure that those sensitive land uses are keeping far enough away from them that they're not experiencing nuisances. And then, there's also now that there's less stringent policies around the removal of employment lands from municipalities. And so, what that used to look like is there had to be, that could only be done at the time of comprehensive review and you had to meet a number of tests in order to go forward and do that. At this point in time, it's being opened up so that you can do those employment land conversions. And however, interestingly enough, unlike the settlement area expansions, there is no appeal process for these. And so, if someone were to come forward and ask municipality to ask a council to convert employment lands, council could choose actually to even make no decision. Or they could choose to refuse it or approve it, but there's no appeal period or appeal process for that any longer. And so, there has been talk in our industry that potentially some municipalities will just not make decisions on them at all if they're not interested in converting employment lands. And I apologize if this is lengthy. I hope I'm not dragging on too much here. And then, with respect to water, wastewater and watershed planning, there is a change with respect to rural settlement areas that are partially serviced. There could potentially be development proposals and expansions there where private communal services are coupled with onsite water services. And then, just for everyone's information, a private communal, sorry, I said water, I meant sewage. A private communal sewage system is a system that serves six or more lots and it is not supposed to be owned or operated by the municipality. And so, that's positive because historically, I know municipalities have not been comfortable taking, signing off on those systems. But that is potentially, we may potentially see some applications like that coming forward as well. And then, I think, so then, further to that, generally speaking, the PPS has always been very closely related to official plan policies and official plan policies being consistent with the PPS. And now, it's speaking for the requirement for zoning and development permit bylaws to be established to permit uses, minimum densities, or sorry, to establish permitted uses, minimum densities, heights and other development standards to accommodate growth and development. And then, it's also requiring that these zoning bylaws be updated on a regular basis. And so, our timing, I think, is perfect in terms of our zoning bylaws as well and in terms of being consistent with this new PPS. And so, then going forward, there is, like I said before, that the PPS is not open for commenting right now. It will come into effect on October 20th. There is, however, a commenting period that is posted on the environmental registry. Right now, that we can comment on, the deadline is tomorrow. So, that's why I'm here at council today. So, we are asking that council direct us, we didn't get much turnaround time. So, we're asking that council direct us to post some of our comments and any comments that council may want to add to the ERO for consideration. These are for transitional policies that could potentially trickle down into regs coming forward. And so, the first one is with respect to the definition in the PPS for affordable and regional market area, or the regional market area within the affordable housing definition has been removed and replaced with municipality. And so, planning authorities, as I said, are advised to work with service managers to determine the average purchase price of a home. And however, this definition differs from the definition within the Development Charges Act, which uses the provincially released housing bulletin to determine affordable housing prices. And historically, Perth County housing numbers have been provided by United Way, Perth Huron, or CMHC. However, the United Way numbers include the city of Stratford and the town of St. Mary's, while CMHC data only includes data for Stratford and North Perth. Without consistent information available across the entirety of Perth County, there's a risk that including Stratford and St. Mary's numbers or not including all of Perth County will skew the definition of affordable. And so, where housing market data is non-existent or non-reliant, which we have concerns that that is the case here for Perth County, we're asking, can affordable housing numbers be listed in the provincial housing bulletin and used instead? So, that's our first question. The second one is where a recent municipal comprehensive review has been undertaken, identifying the land allocation needs required over the planning period. Is there a requirement for settlementary expansions received following October 20th to consider the findings of the municipal comprehensive review? Or are we not able to do that? And then, the third question, the third, fourth and fifth, I actually have been able to, because this has been such a tight turnaround, like I said, this was released in August 20th. We spent time trying to collaborate with different, there's different law firms in Ontario that specialize in planning law. And so, we were waiting for their bulletins to come out, their overviews. We only just had information sessions from the province last week, last Friday, with respect to these changes. And so, in our opinion, the third, fourth and fifth questions with respect to principal dwelling units and additional residential units, we had concerns where agricultural impact assessments applied to them. And we also had concerns relating to MDS. However, we feel that those have been responded to in light of the information sessions that we've attended. That said, I do believe that a councillor may have a question regarding one of these still staying in and being forwarded on to the province. So, I will turn it over to council. But generally speaking, I definitely feel that one, two, and then probably three will, should be forwarded on to the ERO and happy to include any other comments that council may have in addition. And with that, I will turn it over for any questions. Okay, thanks Andrea.
Questions, Councilor Orr?
Yes, Andrea, I would like to, it is on page 83, your third question. We do refer to it higher up here. But yeah, I think we got a little bit of this one as seen as wording of principal dwelling associated with agricultural operations. A lot are considered residential use, but rather considering agricultural use of our agricultural laws.
Just curious about the tax implications there.
So, through the warden to the question, I think that's an excellent point. Definitely, we were trying to understand what the benefit was in calling those dwellings and dwelling units in prime ag areas agricultural uses versus residential uses. And I think that's a great point, Councillor Orr. And so, I would say that if we could amend that number three to include something with respect to tax implications. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Kastenberg?
Thank you, Warden Aitken. I have two sort of general areas I'd like to pursue, if I might. The first relates to this introduction of new terminology, strategic growth areas. And I mean, I think we have, you know, to simplify what were complex discussions around the official plan, we had sort of come up with this notion that, and I think actually supported by provincial policy, that we directed growth to service land. And so, now I'm starting to see that there's yet another definition and another set of words perhaps thrown into this mix. And I found it interesting that you had mentioned downtown areas as strategic growth areas with perhaps some concerns or some benefits associated with the costs of infrastructure. And yet, I think we can talk honestly about the fact that when we undertake downtown renewals in communities and Listwell faces one in the next five to 10 years, those are massive infrastructure costs that, you know, are particularly easily embraced. I know when I first became mayor, I sat down with Councillor Mackenzie and we had a chat about the Mitchell Downtown Renewal Project. And I know that it was a massive and significant effort, both from a resources perspective, but particularly from a cost perspective. So, you know, here we are, we're being encouraged, it would seem, to use a new term, strategic growth areas. It appears that the lens may be that those are downtown areas. And yet, at the same time, when we think about the infrastructure implications of this, it feels like yet another download potentially to municipal governments trying to manage what are already fairly austere resources around infrastructure. So, I guess I'm kind of querying, have we changed or is the doctrine changed now? Are we saying that strategic growth areas are downtowns and we need to put priority on those? And if so, what does that even look like? And the more important question, how do we even afford that? So, that's my first area to pursue with you. I know you probably don't have all of the answers, but I'm curious if you have first thoughts at this.
So, through the warden to the question, yes, I think the short answer is, I think, like based on my understanding of the PPS, there is that expectation that municipalities are investing in sanitary and water and infrastructure to accommodate housing. I know there are several funding streams out there right now, too, with respect to, I can't remember the exact wording, but it's infrastructure to enable housing. And so, there's potentially opportunities there. But it also talks about phasing and taking a phased approach with respect to infrastructure and having, you know, kind of taking a strategic approach in where those upgrades should take place. And I think, generally speaking, the idea is that the infrastructure upgrades would take place instead of potentially continuously growing outwards. And so, the hope would be obviously that, you know, if a municipality puts that investment into that infrastructure, that the development would follow.
Okay, I understand the doctrine that is sort of embedded in that and I get it, although it's not particularly easy. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying let's tear up the, or let's, you know, eat into farmland. It's not particularly easy to be pulling up downtowns for the sake of improving capacity. I mean, there are parts of Listwell with infrastructure that was sort of organized and implemented in the early 1900s. And so, you know, that's a significant cost and there are often buildings that are immediately adjacent to where that kind of infrastructure needs to be addressed in the future. Certainly, if I might, just sort of a final thought on this, the argument may be made that over the years, our governments should have been responsible enough to set aside money for asset renewal and punishment. And of course, it's only been, what, six or seven years? Councillor Wollham might remember that the province said you must have asset management. But, you know, a lot of municipalities went for a long run before that. I think Walter might agree too, without sort of thinking about pure replacement value of assets that were in the ground that would age. And so, here we are with, you know, sort of a six or seven-year mandate. And, you know, we're going to struggle to replace stuff that has three, five, 30, 35-year life cycles, right? Like there's a gap. I think we all know it. I think we're all commenting on it. But, you know, this sort of lends the potential to aggravate the gap in some ways. And with respect, sorry, I'm being political for just one moment, Warden. With respect, the water-enabling infrastructure funds and the other various grants the province has put out have been woefully inadequate to the challenge of 444 municipalities in this province. So, that's not really a path that is going to lead us to success, but we will be stressed to do these things. All right, let's talk about the second question. So, this PPS has new information and sort of, there's a vagueness to it. I'm hoping that, and certainly you've identified this in your question about the vagueness, but I think it's even bigger than that. What do we think are the essential mandates now regarding housing affordability that warrant action by the county and/or revision to this draft official plan, which is two weeks from being delivered to a public meeting for consultation? And I guess my specific question is, does the language of the new PPS suggest mandate that we need to have targets in the plan for affordable and attainable housing? Is that the read of this housing options and you need to deal with that?
Through the warden to the question, so it definitely is, this is a place where section 2.2 in the PPS speaks to establishing and implementing. So, again, that's that stronger wording that we're seeing. And so, they're saying that we should establish and implement minimum targets for the provision of housing that is affordable to low- and moderate-income households and coordinating land use planning and planning for housing. And then, again, with the service managers to address the full range of housing options. And then again, with the service managers to address the full range of housing options. So there's a call to establish and implement targets, but it's not solely focused, my read and my interpretation is it is not solely focused on only affordable and to low and moderate income housing. It's also including that continuum of housing that we speak to.
If I might, just one supplemental, Warden, on that one. So we have, to some degree, avoided targets, but we've talked about sort of guidance. We had information from the Watson Economic Study that, around housing, that gave us some targets, there were guidance, if you will, and it was even evolved down to the socioeconomic strata, so looking at income and how many households we'd need for that type and so forth, right? But operationalizing that's really very difficult in the broad scheme, because it's not like you can say, okay, we have houses that are for people who have incomes of 20,000 or less, houses for 30,000 or less, or houses for 40,000 or less, right? There's a problem with the approach to implement. So I guess what I'm interested in is will the next draft, the draft that we see in the coming weeks of the official plan, actually include some target information? Because clearly, in the Watson report for North Perth, the 10-year housing forecast was around 2,500 new homes, 650 of which were to be affordable based on general definitions of affordability. And yet, we see no significant progress, no progress, no significant progress being made to that 650 or so homes that are acquired that are said to be affordable. So how are we going to deal with that now?
Through the warden to the question, so I can speak to, we did spend some time more recently in setting densities and setting targets. We've changed that wording. That draft is out for review at this point in time. If you'd like to take a look and let us know your thoughts. But, I mean, it's tricky, because as you've seen, there are not a lot of affordable housing project proposals coming forward. And, you know, we're hearing in our industry that there needs to be more funding opportunities to bring these units forward. And so I don't know if this wording is a shift to say, consider every housing option. And so I don't know if it's, you know, kind of taking some of that movement away from affordable housing, but I don't think that as municipalities and as Perth County staff and council, I don't think we should shift away from that. I think we definitely have thoughts on, you know, establishing inventories of vacant lands. One thing that they've talked about a lot, and I'm sure you've heard it in your circles as well, is picking out those provincial and federal sites, so potentially post offices. There's big talk of developing post offices. And I know the municipality that I previously worked in, we had an eight-acre omaphra site that is now being redeveloped, and it's high-density apartment buildings that are going on to it. And so it was a site that was, I think we heard about it at the housing symposium earlier this week, but it was one of those sites that was fully grassed and with a small office building on it. And so I think as staff, we would like to work with the municipalities to see, or sorry, municipal staff, to see if there are opportunities there that we can, you know, present, we can try our best on our side to get some of these units and continue to, you know, to set targets and whatnot, and hope the rest falls in line.
Okay, councillor McDermott.
Yes, it's on page 273, it's sewage water and storm water. No longer any requirement for a stormwater master plan for settlement areas, but subdivisions, and if somebody's putting a house in, can the municipality still require them to do something for stormwater management? It's, I think, the lawyer report, it's 273 in our, in our.
It's 82, 882 of 273, yeah.
Oh, 273, sir. My mistake.
If I may, what section is that in the?
It's the report after your report.
I didn't, I didn't bring that one. I think it's section. 2.6 of the PPS.
I think it's somewhere in, yeah, 3, 3, 6.1C or something like that. It's in the, in the report from lawyers. It says there's no longer any requirement for a stormwater master plan for settlement areas. So I was still wondering if though, if somebody's putting in a subdivision or even putting a house in, that there would still be some kind of, something that maybe that they would be required to still look after that. But that's fine, if you want, you can send me an email after, that's fine.
Through the warden to the question, I don't think that that would, like, the master plan would be the overall plan for the entire settlement area, but it doesn't mean that we can't require stormwater management per development, would be my understanding. I don't think that would be wise to abandon stormwater management plans.
Well, no, it was just that it was there, it was sort of like, okay, what exactly are they meaning? I understand settlement area, but it was just to kind of make sure that there's still something in there that, that that is something that does have to be looked after when somebody's doing a subdivision or even just building a, a, a house in a infill or something.
Okay, councillor Duncan.
Excuse me, through you, Warden, I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to kind of narrow them down to a couple. My first one is, the province's using of the word agricultural impact assessment, is there any framework for what they're asking this assessment to encompass?
Yes.
Is there any criteria for this agricultural impact assessment?
Through the, through the warden, no, not exclusively, I can think in the definition. So the information that we have, basically using the definition, so it says it means the evaluation of potential impacts of non-agricultural uses on the agricultural system, and assessment recommends ways to avoid, or if avoidance is not possible, minimize and mitigate adverse impacts. My understanding is that agricultural impact assessments have been required for a number of years within the growth plan areas. And so that's actually been, because they've consolidated the growth plan with the PPS, that's kind of, it's coming over from there. And so I definitely think that there is likely, there are likely many examples that we could look to, to help establish a specific criteria for what we would need to address.
Okay, so in relation to that, the changes to the wording within the servicing requirements allowing development to be on communal septic and private water sources, are we going to see a huge increase in applications for small housing developments randomly throughout our agricultural community that have six or eight houses on them, build a communal septic system and a couple of private wells and say, we want to build this here? And will there be criteria in this agricultural impact assessment to decide whether that's a good idea or not?
Through the warden to the question, there are a number of criteria that are set out for establishing new settlement areas or settlement area expansions. Generally speaking, those areas that, like, the PPS generally directs growth to service settlement areas. However, you're right, it does, it is opening the door to where there are partial services available already. So those, we would be looking at potentially St Paul's, Sabringville, I can't think of where else off the top of my head.
No, maybe the other.
So you would be looking at situations where, I mean, we could have situations where those types of applications are coming forward. And potentially, it doesn't impact other areas as much, or other municipalities as much. I think it would have, it could potentially impact us significantly. I don't, I think for a number of reasons. I think even like, you know, having to, you know, make sure that, you know, there's going to be a more robust road maintenance and snow removal and those types of things, because suddenly you have these areas that are expanding and expanding, right? And it's not necessarily what we would consider good planning always. However, so it does allow us to comment on those. As council, you could decide, you know, generally speaking, in light of, like, we just completed the comprehensive review, just completed our land allocation, we think that we have a pretty good handle on where development should go without, you know, creating a significant impact on our agricultural areas. And so I think council could be comfortable saying, you know, we don't want to see this expansion, it's not good planning, it's not a good use of infrastructure, and we have lands allocated. The applicant could appeal it then, but I don't know what that looks like when it gets to the OLT. You would think that there would be some sort of rationale that would be required in order to expand when we've just allocated, I think it's over 200 acres or hectares, right, to our different settlement areas. So I would be surprised if something like that got a lot of traction, but.
Can I just have one more, Warden? The reference to watershed planning, what does the province refer to there? It's pretty vague, watershed planning.
So through the warden to the question, so the watershed planning is the specific wording, and I checked it again this morning, but the watershed planning speaks mostly to upper tiers in, I think it's, I think they call it fast-growing municipalities. And so I think that we are, we fall outside of that, we're not identified as one of those fast-growing municipalities. However, it is noted in our report, because I think there's definitely an opportunity to be more involved in watershed planning and collaborate more closely with conservation authorities. And, you know, with that, you know, potentially informed policies or provisions in our zoning bylaws, also when we're, new developments are coming forward, to take those opportunities to do that. And so that's, I kind of see it as, you know, a push for us to collaborate more closely with our RCA's.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Spence?
Thanks, Warden, thanks Andrea. So mine, you mentioned the PPS a couple of times, with all these changes the last few years and now this change, obviously, we make the decision for developments, a new development comes in, we have comments from neighbors, we have comments from different groups. Do we anticipate, that's good, the prior report, you've got, one of the things you're going to work on after the OP is your reports for evidence-based stuff, should we go to appeals? Do you anticipate, again, a new development comes in, we say yes or no, based, well, again, most of it's based on staff, on your reports, so there's the odd time where, you know, council decides, well, we're not going to go with staff because of various reasons. Do we anticipate any more appeals coming if we say no to a developer and then that developer wants to appeal, we say yes to the developer, and whether it's a group of citizens, other groups want to appeal? Because we all know these changes, some of these developments are coming into areas where they've been established and people have been there forever and they don't like this. Do we anticipate, and perhaps it's just probably your guess or comment, Andrea, is would we be expecting more appeals going to the OLT going forward?
So through the warden to the question, I think, so appeals, third-party appeal rights on official plan amendments, settlement area expansions have been eliminated. And so you won't see appeals from citizen groups, potentially on, you know, like a settlement area expansion at all, or an official plan amendment. But I, in my experience, I would be willing to bet that if someone submitted an application to expand a settlement area or to establish a new settlement area and council did not support it, I mean, at that point in time, they have invested a significant amount of money, there is that, that door is open to the appeal. And so, I mean, I think for a pretty good likelihood that they would appeal it. I would caution council in, please don't let your decisions be based on if it will get appealed. I've watched councils say, oh, we better just do this because it's going to get appealed. And that's, I think that, I mean, it's good to have, you know, reasonable understanding of the proposal and a reasonable decision as to why you're supporting it or not supporting it. I can say, though, that there is a considerable amount of cost that is involved in appeals. And, yeah, it's, it's not pleasant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor McDermott.
Yeah, just finished your drink, I have to track all this stuff, and there seems like there's a whole lot more work here than there was before. And not wanting to put you on the spot, though, but are you going to need extra staff?
Through the warden to the question, there is a significant amount more work. We do have, we, council, if you recall, gave us approval to hire a planning associate in hopes that they would become a planner. That individual is now pursuing a master's degree, and so they're down to 14 hours a week. And so they were specifically supporting Moira in the policy division. And so that's excellent for us, because we are, you know, we have someone who's really eager in gaining a master's degree, becoming a planner. However, it leaves us a little bit short in the time, for the time being. We have the TMU opportunity to get those student placements has been great. We have one student placement this semester, we had one in the winter semester, and I have let TMU know that we can in fact host two. They don't require tech or anything like that, we can get them to do research projects even remotely. Some of them are interested in coming into the office and, you know, getting the whole municipal experience, so that's been great. They're potentially, yes, it would be nice if we could bridge the gap while our one planning associate is becoming a planner. That said, I know that there are some budget implications coming forward with other items, so I respect that as well, so we will continue to do our best.
But there is more work involved now, yes.
But all the legislative changes, like, I've never seen this in my career, it's just, and the turnarounds that we have, that we are given each time, I want to believe this is, we're nearing the end. But every time, we, if you give, if you drop something on August 20th and we have to have comments by, you know, October 4th, that doesn't give us a lot of. to have comments by, you know, October 4th, that doesn't give us a lot of time. So we're dropping, something's dropping and we're trying to do as much research as we can and prepare comments and, and that type of thing. So it does definitely spread us then for sure.
Any other questions? Council Konchowski?
Yeah, thanks, Warden through you. Andrea, I just, I wanted to circle back to the additional dwelling units on agricultural The subjects come up where the addition, no, sorry, not the additional dwelling units, but the dwelling units for the farm workers. The comment or the questions come up, the potential for those living spaces, the intent is for farm workers working for that farm business, but the potential exists for those living spaces to be rented out to non-farm workers. So would that be something that we would have to deal with in our bylaw to prevent that activity from taking place that would stray away from the intent of those living spaces?
Through the warden to the question, spent a little bit of time thinking about this. I know I have heard within my, my circles that there are concerns with them being converted to Airbnb's. And so I know definitely there, there is that thought there. And so potentially in collaboration with municipal staff, we might, definitely we're, we were considering, that's one of the reasons too, why we wanted to, to track the number of units that are being created or rooms or however it, it translates. And then potentially it, it will come down to an enforcement issue. I, I can also say that in the PPS, in the definition for farm worker housing, it does, or sorry, in the, I think it's in the agricultural uses definition, it does say farm worker housing, and I think it says where warranted. And so I think then the idea would be that we could potentially require a zone change at the time where the applicant would have to, or we could put provisions in place in the zoning bylaws, however that looked, to basically ensure that it's a large enough farming operation that would warrant farm worker housing. And so for example, you have a 200 acre cabbage operation, right? Then you could, you could argue that yes, you have 10, you need 10 units or 10 house, 10 bedrooms or something like that. So I think we would be taking a closer look at that type of thing. But unfortunately, and I hate to, to be the person to, to kick it down the line, but it, it will potentially come to enforcement option where it's, it's kicked down to the chief building official and their, and their bylaw enforcement. So if we can, yeah, if we can establish provisions, and there hasn't been enough time to talk about it, but I'm sure, you know, other municipalities are like Huron. I, I was thinking last night too, I think probably I need to sit down with, with a couple of Huron, Middlesex, Oxford, Wellington to see what kind of what they're doing to in, you know, for these types of, of things and how we can control them.
Right, because.
Or regulate them.
On the surface, like the immediate need is for agricultural workers so that farm business can satisfy those conditions and criteria to demonstrate the need. But over time, farm businesses do change in nature. So if that, if they didn't have the 200 acres of cabbage or they didn't have the 200 cows, they didn't need workers, but that, those spaces are still vacant. And then there's ways to convert that, quote unquote, convert that space into other living accommodations. I guess, and my second, more of a comment, going back to, this is about the additional dwelling units and the farm worker buildings being, I guess, maybe it is the farm worker living spaces being deemed agricultural use rather than residential. My hunch is that if it's deemed agricultural, yes, there will be an impact on municipal taxes, but the upside is that the proponents building those housing units will get some kind of a break in terms of income tax of the business to promote, stimulate constructing those units and thereby making that housing more affordable, not only to the business, but I guess to the workers as well. And then taking the pressure off of the housing supply in the, in the settlement areas. That, that's my hunch, but I don't pretend to know what they're thinking when they devise a policy, but that's just, that's just a comment, I guess, in relation to council or ours concerning the question. It's a valid concern that the tax implication is important to consider from the municipal side of the ledger, but on the industry side of the ledger, I could, if I'm right, then I could see where the benefit comes into play there. So, but it's a question that should be asked nonetheless. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor.
Just a question, an informational question. It may be that Mr. McClellan or Ms. Wolf had the answer to this, but I am awfully curious. I note that in the, this new PPS, there seems to be almost a facilitation towards private sewage systems as part of possibilities. And I think my question is, should such fail, if these were implemented more broadly and should such fail? Who's on the hook to deal with the failure, the cost of the failure and the assumption of the risk or responsibility of said under those circumstances?
I would say it's the users are, are responsible for it. If, through the warden, excuse me, through the warden, if it's privately owned, it's the users. And a lot of those systems, if they're tertiary, there is a requirement through the building code that they're serviced twice a year by a professional with certain qualifications. And the, the local building official will receive a report, for example, of any sort of even minor infractions for the use of those systems. For example, if you wash your paintbrushes and sink and it goes in through your system, that'll show up in the testing and the building official will get a report and then they send a letter to the homeowner. But if it's privately owned, it's, it's private.
Just wanted to be sure.
Okay, any other questions? A great report, very informative, an awful lot going on, a lot of moving parts here. So.
Another question, Warden Nagitz, as the warden pointed out, it's, there's a lot of detail and a lot of information. And this is an open ended question. I don't expect you to have an answer right away, but public information and education, how do we, how do we get this information into the public's scope or get it, get, get it in their, into their views, let they learn and understand it? Because I'm sure all of my colleagues around the council table at their lower tier, respective lower tier councils, when these applications come forward, people come to, as people come to a meeting, as Councilor Smith has pointed out, people come to a meeting and say, how can this be possible? Where did this come from? Thinking that we, the lower tier or in the county council have developed these and devised these policies when it's provincial policy and we're basically the messenger of the provincial policy. So how do we get, this is like the 20, $64,000 question, how do, how do we get the public up to speed on the changes? First much is your staff and this council struggles trying to stay ahead of the curve. How do we get that information to the public so that they can first of all, receive it and then digest it and then begin to understand it? I guess that's, that's my big question going forward now, but in the future, in the months ahead.
You don't have to answer that.
No, like I said, it's not a question that can be answered right now, but I would, I would, I guess my ask is that we think about, collectively think about how, how we could do that. Like we've had the experience with the official plan, we know what that experience has been like, trying to get the message out to the public. This is, this is another, another item from this, another page from the same chapter of provincial policy changes that impact us locally every day. So how, how are we going to manage it? I guess is the question.
That's going to be a difficult task, I think, to get it all out and, and get the people educated in how things have changed. So are there any more questions on this report? If not, we have a motion that council receives the new provincial planning statement 2024 update report, that council directs county planning staff to submit comments to the environmental ministry of Ontario and that the new provincial planning statement 2024 update be circulated to the lower tier municipalities for information. Move by the secondary, moved by Councilor Orr, second by Councilor Kermit, all in favor? Carried. Thanks Andrea, a very extensive report. And like I said, that has a lot, a lot of moving parts, so. Okay, we're going to move on. I think it went from a sauna in more to an egg glue, but very cool. Anyway, we're going to move to corporate services and the first one is from forestry inspectors and Tyler's going to get it. Tyler, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So through the warden for council is the August 2024 forestry inspector's report. This report is prepared by Marvin Smith, the forestry inspector for the county. In the month of August, Marvin completed six inspections in response of a submission of the newest intent and one inspection response to a question of a land order. If there's any questions, concerns or inquiries, I'd be happy to pass those along.
Any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that council receives the August 2024 forestry inspector's report for information. By Councilor Wilhelm, second by Deputy Warden Callum, all in favor? Carried. Okay, and the next one is the corporate services, August update, and I believe Laurie's going to do that.
Thank you, through the warden. Annette, today sends her regrets for the meeting. Her report today covers key activities in August in the divisions within corporate services portfolio. Those activities relate to public service, regulatory compliance, training, collaboration and project work with staff both at the county and the four local municipalities. So a lot of fine work, both internal for our own operations as well as external and working with our four local municipalities going on. This is an information report and I'm happy to follow up on any questions that you may have in my discussions with Annette going forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives the corporate services, August 2024 update report for information. Moved by Councilor Konchowski, second by Councilor Kassenberg, all in favor? Carried. Okay, we're going to move to public works and the first one is our facility update and we have John and Bill with us this morning. Gentlemen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Nagitz, and good morning, council. The first report just summarizes the project status for the five Huron Renault and Connecting Link Edition. One thing to note, the council has approved the inclusion of a new generator into the project and two increases to the contingency allowance, bringing the revised construction contract value of 5.525 and 9 million and $900. We noted that I'm not requesting any other contingency increase this weekend. The report is positive, we are making significant progress. To date, construction costs incurred total approximately 3.6 million. At the last project update, I noted the discovery of an old oil tank. And at that point in time, just the work to be done there, there were certain, certainly concern for delays to the project completion because of that. I'm happy to report that we've remediated the area. Everything's been taken care of and we are just awaiting TSSA final approval on that, which I hope to be forthcoming. However, that was a costly item to the project and certainly the bigger concern was to the project schedule. I am happy to report that one of the critical components of the project was a hydro upgrade and that has been completed in the first week of September. So that's allowed some of our subcontractors, Delta Elevator, to get in and start installing the elevator. They've made great progress and we're just looking to get the cab and doors completed with that. The contractor was able to get sidewalks, the front entrance and curb port, and then that followed with the paving of the parking lot, which was completed on September 9th. That was, we were happy to see that. I know staff has been able, not been able to park in that parking lot for well over a month. So we're very grateful for all their cooperation through that. I must say, I'm probably on site now almost every day, just checking out the progress. We are getting down to the finishing stages of this project and it's very pleasing to see that almost every day you're seeing a big change to the project as far as coming to a, a completion. You can now get a sense of the space that we're going to be working in and I've been able to tour our management team through that last week. Many of the lighting fixtures have been installed, painting done, and we're now installing glass panels into the meeting rooms and offices. The pictures in the report are unfortunately a little outdated. When I write the reports, about two weeks ago, so they're old. It, it really does change on a daily basis here and I'm looking forward to seeing what's been done today, as of today. The majority of the concrete walkway and retaining wall around the side and the back have been poured and we'll be commencing grading of that shortly. Our last site meeting was last Thursday and as of that, the contractor was on schedule to complete in the month of November. We anticipate occupancy in the month of November, however, when that is will be determined by a few things, the commissioning of, from TSSA for the elevator and also commissioning for the heating venting and air conditioning system within the building. If there's any other questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report? No questions? I just want to make a comment, John, you've done a great job. You know, we really appreciate all the effort you've put into this and it's really great to see the, the stages as we're going through here and the photos and where it's going and it is exciting when we get to the end here. So I'm, I'm sure you'll be glad when we're at the end, but you have done an awesome job on this project, so. Okay, if there's no questions, and a motion that council receives the facilities project update report. Moved by Councilor Wilhelm, second by Councilor McDermott, all in favor? Carried. Okay, the next report is the road network rationalization project and Bill, Laura's yours.
Thank you, Warden Nagitz. Through the warden, good morning, council. This information report from Public Works provides council with an update on the road network rationalization project that is currently underway. The project includes a review of county road network to ensure that its roads are functioning within their designation and to consider local roads that may be functioning at a higher level, necessitating a need for further review evaluation. As council will recall, a road network rationalization committee consisting of heads of the respective councils was established to determine the criteria of weighting system, framework that will be used in the evaluation. Council will also recall awarding an RFP to Tatum Engineering Limited to provide consulting services to the county through the rationalization exercise and to assist the committee in establishing the criterion and weighting system. The criteria and weighting and threshold are the fundamental components of this exercise. These are the elements that the road network will be evaluated against. Tatum Engineering has developed a list of criteria and weightings which are included in the report. They are based on common best practices published by the Ontario Good Road Association and rationalization assessments completed by other similar tier municipalities. The road assessment is a three step review. The first step is a criteria based assessment, which includes assessment against eight of the criteria listed in table one within the report. The second step reevaluates the network through a principle based approach to consider a high level overview of the network, identifying gaps and redundancies and, and serving as a means to fine tune the network. The principle based review does not include a weighting score system, but it is simplified to a yes or no for each principal threat, threshold, such that majority of the thresholds must be met to be considered as a county road. The principle based criteria and the corresponding objectives are listed in table two of the report. Lastly, following the application of the principle and criteria based assessments, the results are reviewed to consider special considerations that may include the findings of the assessments. Road Rationalization Committee met on September 5th, where the committee received a presentation from the consulting. from the consulting team and reviewed the proposed and recommended assessment criteria. At the same meeting, a motion was carried by the committee in support of the recommended criteria. Following the committee meeting, staff have been working with Tatum to fill in remaining data gaps, obtaining updated traffic volumes. Once all the data has been updated, the consultant will complete the rationalization exercise by assessing and mapping out the road network on selected criteria and through this three-step process. This project remains on schedule with the final report expected before the end of the year and the project does include allowances for the consult to present the findings to county council and to each of the local councils. That concludes my summary of this report and we're happy to address any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any questions of the report? Councillor Wilhelm?
Yes, with the consulting looking at the volume, et cetera, for and other criteria for lower-tier roads to be taken over by the county, are they also looking at county roads that do not meet those numbers and should not be a county road now?
Through the warden, to the question, yes, the consultant is reviewing this. Yes, the reviewing of the traffic counts, the criteria will be ran against the existing county road network to determine whether they should remain a county road or potentially be told.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives the road network rationalization project update report. Moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Duncan, all in favour? Carried. And the next report is the intersection review. John?
Thank you, warden Nagitz. In 2023, Public Works staff updated all traffic counts on county roadways. This was done for a couple of reasons, the first being that traffic counts were not updated during the years of the COVID pandemic. Typically, when we take traffic counts, we like to things a little more normal and average for what we'd like to see. Secondly, this year, we're undertaking the road rationalization process that Bill just spoke about and updated traffic counts are imperative to that process. Typically, when we review updated traffic counts, it's common to see increases by a few hundred vehicles a day and also we could see decreases by that amount as well. But one thing we did notice was that there were three sections of roadway where traffic volumes were substantially increased. Those roads are Perth Road 130 from Perth Line 20 to Segrenville, Perth Line 33 from Stratford to Perth Road 107 and Perth Road 107 from Shakespeare to Tavistock. The north leg of Perth Road 130 now carries just over 4,000 vehicles per day and compared to the last time it was counted at about 2,500 vehicles per day. About half of that traffic of the 4,000 vehicles is turning at the intersection of Perth Line 20. Given that the traffic volumes on Perth Line 20 are 2,600 vehicles per day, staff were concerned that the stop controls were on the wrong road and this warranted further investigation. Perth Line 33 carries approximately 4,300 vehicles per day, up from 3,500 at the last traffic count. Perth Road 107 also saw an increase of about 500 to 600 vehicles per day and now carries approximately 5,500 vehicles per day. Because of the increased volume and volume splits, staff have also performed an intersection reviews at Perth Road 130, Perth Line 20 and at Perth Road 107 and Perth Line 33. Scope and details of those reviews are summarized in the report. Later on, staff identified Perth Line 44 and Perth Road 135 and Perth Line 72 and Perth Road 131 as intersections where volume splits were also close and warranted further review. However, those two reviews indicated that both these intersections did not meet the always-stop or traffic signal warrant. No changes to the traffic control are being recommended at those two intersections at this time. However, the intersection of Perth Road 130 and Perth Line 20 does meet the always-stop warrant. This is being recommended to be installed as soon as possible and could likely be completed by the end of October. The intersection of Perth Road 107 and Perth Line 33 meets the traffic signal warrant. This installation would take more time and certainly carries a higher price tag. In consultation with the consultant and in keeping with guidance of the Ontario Traffic Manual, it is being recommended that an always-stop be installed at this intersection as an interim measure. Signals would be budgeted for and part of a planned road reconstruction on Perth Road 107 in the year 2028. It should be noted that we'd likely have to do some geometrical modifications at this intersection before we can get the always-stop installed. If approved today, we expect that we could make those changes and have the always-stop installed by November. There are some other recommendations for delineation lighting and sign modifications that are summarized in the report, but we've covered the major topics here and if there's any further questions, we'd be happy to answer. I would note that we have shared this report and the recommended changes with our Public Works counterparts at both Perth South and Perth East. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives the intersection reviews report and that council designate the intersection of Perth Road 130 and Perth Line 20 as an always-stop by amending Schedule A of bylaw 2956 as according through highways and that council designate the intersection of Perth Road 107 and Perth Line 33 as always-stop by amending Schedule A of bylaw 2956 meeting through highways. Need to move on a secondary for that? Move by councillor Wilhelm, second by councillor Trenkowski, all in favour? Carried. Thanks, gentlemen. We're going to take a quick break and it will be because we still have a lot of things on our agenda this morning, so just pause here for about five minutes. Okay, we're going to proceed on. We have, next item is council reports and our first item is the 125th Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference, which councillor Smith attended and he's given us a very thorough report of what he did. Do you have any more comments?
Nothing further. I don't anticipate doing these at every conference because I just thought I would do it, it was the 125th. Just for your information there.
Questions? To Kassenberg?
If I might, I was in attendance and I really felt that this AMO meeting was pretty much all housing, all health, all time. Those were the two topics that were the focus of the meeting and perhaps rightfully so. That's where our province is at this point in time. There was just such a strong emphasis on those two topics and all wealth of opportunities around and it was appreciated.
Okay. We have a motion that council receives 125th AMO councillor Smith's activity report for information. Moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Trenkowski, all in favour? Carried. The next item is the warden's activity. That's where I was for the month of September. Any questions of any of the events that I attended? If not, we have a motion that council receives the warden's activity report, September 2024, report for information. Moved by deputy warden Callum, second by councillor Wilhelm, all in favour? Carried. Okay, and the next report is our community transportation steering committee, which I am the chair of, had a couple of meetings in the last few months in regards to this. I think Justin's going to give us a more thorough report. I'll let him do the report and then if there's any questions, we can ask him those questions. Justin, welcome.
So thank you, through the warden. I'm happy to present this community transportation steering committee report to council. So I prepared a short presentation just to underline some key points that the committee was reviewing during their, that kind of contributed to the recommendations they have before you today, so. Change this slide. So quickly, I'm just going to touch on the actual recommendations, a bit of the timeline that informed the committee, some information on ridership, post-CT pilot funding, our rural route service options post-CT, as well as the engagement plan based on the recommendation to county council this morning. So again, the recommendations are that council receives the report and that council direct staff received a public engagement regarding the future of the county's rural route transit service. So just in terms of some of the timeline that's leading to this need for council decision on the program, kind of just going back to the start, so a reminder that in 2018 is when we launched PC Connect through our successful application. Sorry, we, our application was successful in 2018 and 2020, we launched the service in November due to provincial directive at that time to get our buses on the road. In 2021, we operated during public health orders and also received a two-year extension to that pilot program, which brings us now to the March 31st, 2025 deadline. Along with that, we also received 859,000 in recognition of those challenges that we have with the service. In 2023, we saw our first major change to the Perth County service, rural route service with consolidation of routes A and B in September. And then in 2024, we received an initial 159,000 in March of this year to bring us to our March 31st, 2025 deadline. So looking ahead to 2025, we obviously have our March 31st deadline when our CT funding will end and our projects are being encouraged to transition to provincial gas tax as well as other sustainability options and have those in place. And in addition to our March 31st deadline for the CT grant, we also have our agreements with our service providers and as well as our obligations to notify our riders, community partners and others who have come to rely on the service. That's kind of the timeline which is driving this decision and recommendation to council this morning. Just quickly, some of the ridership numbers that we were sharing and discussing through the committee. We discussed the positive growth trend that Perth County Rural Route Service had since its launch, including our most recent three-month average of just over 707 riders. We talked a little bit about the, again, who's using our service. So in terms of our ridership, 75% are adults, 14.3% are seniors, 5.9% are students and 4.6% are children under five who utilize the service currently free of charge. And in terms of how they are paying for the service, we see that 79% of the riders are currently paying for the service either with cash onboard or through our Blaze app in advance with their credit card and that 21% of our users are using that through ridership passes which either have been purchased from external agencies or in some cases, they purchase those passes directly through the county. So that's just a quick snapshot of who's using the service. And then finally, on the ridership, talking about where our riders are coming from and going to, we do see that we have fairly wide distribution of our riders across the three municipalities that have stops and of course, Stratford continues to be a hub for riders accessing regional services and are making connections to either the other PC Connect routes or other transportation services. So another metric that we discuss at the committee on the data side, the final slide I'll share on that is the cost per ride, which is one indicator of our efficiency of our service and has been decreasing since the start of the rural route in 2024. So we see here that our cost per ride dipped to 59.94 in May and our current average for the year is about just around $69 and 62.47 in our most recent month. So we see that our cost per ride continues to trend downward and just as a note on this, this is basically the cost of our service minus our fare revenue divided by the total number of rides. So it doesn't include any subsidy, which is currently, right now, 100% from the CT grant. So the committee also considered our post-CT funding sources. So we talked at length about provincial gas tax and I've included in the report some information on how that amount is derived based on the provincial funding formula, as well as the Ontario Transit Investment Fund, which is a fund that was announced in March of this year or February of this year, but to this point, there hasn't been any further detail shared by the province on how, what the eligibility criteria, how that would be administered. We just know that's a $5 million fund that will be released at some point. So those, kind of further to the note that came from SCOR, those are points where SCOR and SCT have been actively advocating to both initiate some further information on OTIF as well as a change to provincial gas tax formula, which currently disadvantages rural transportation systems. And then again, other post-CT revenue sources include our fare revenue, which there's information included in the report on our current fares and our projections, as well as finally, the last kind of source of revenue we look to draw on as county levy and for 2025, the levy stabilization reserves, which was earmarked for transit. So based on all that information, the committee reviewed and proposed three options that they considered. So those are on the screen in the report, as well as the financial implications for 2025 as well as for subsequent years, given the current situation. And then, I guess, based on the report from the committee and the recommendation that's before council today to engage in some public engagement, we've prepared a community engagement plan to help us deliver on that recommendation. So what that would include is primarily a community impact survey, so deployed through online means, county website, social media, our municipal partners and their websites, as well as notification to riders directly through the Blaze app, printed surveys, so that would, those would be distributed through the rural route buses, municipal offices, as well as we anticipate community partners would also be interested in having printed copies available at their locations. We would anticipate the survey would be open for a three-week period, so looking to deploy this quite quickly within October. And we've engaged Dylan Consulting's transit team to support us in terms of providing survey design as well as providing analysis of the results of that impact survey. And based on this timeline and council's recommendation, our committee's recommendation started to engage in public engagement, we would see a report coming to the transportation steering committee back in early part of November, early to mid-November, and their recommendations to council for the December 5th regular meeting. So that's just a very quick overview of, again, the process, the timelines and our plan to deliver on the engagement that's been recommended should council, the recommendation. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to the chair, ask the warden, sorry, for any questions.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Questions, councillor Smith?
Thanks, Justin. Through the wardens, just to confirm, the options presented here, one, two, three and four, those are what we're going to probably deal with in December?
Through the warden, those are the recommendations or the options that came from committee. So they could present those same options or potentially new options or additional options, if that is direction.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Warden Callum?
Yes, so thank you for the presentation. Could you please figure out or maybe off the top of your head what it would cost each household, worst-case scenario?
Yep, so actually through some assistance with their finance team, we did, based on our 2025 numbers, we're looking at about $5.10 per household. As a household, cost would increase 1.1% on their household rate, as well as for subsequent years, we're looking at about $21.93 per household for full year 2026. Beyond, again, those are estimates based on current assessment, so they're not exact, but those are the best assessments that our finance team was able to drive for us.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilhelm?
Yes, and first off, I'd like to congratulate the staff on making the decisions to reduce expenses, i.e. routes, et cetera, where necessary, and to innovative ideas on how to promote ridership. I guess my question is, going forward, has the city of Stratford and the town of St Mary's been approached to assist in subsidizing the routes from March on? And also, has the Onyx Bus, our bus, been contacted? been contacted at the possibility of setting up some routes and being assisted by the county to reduce the overall cost of bus services?
Sure. And through the, through the warden. So in terms of the approaching other municipalities to contribute, we have not done that. They have their own service through North Perth, Stratford and St. Mary's that they are looking to fund post-CT as well. So we have not approached those municipalities for additional funding post-March 31st, 2025. So that takes care of that. And then in terms of the Onyx Bus, so I know again, kind of, I believe that there was some discussions with that team prior to my coming to this role. They're operating a bit of a different model, different timetables. And I guess they're you know, they, they don't have a long-term commitment. They may or may not have a long-term commitment and we're not sure what their, what their plans are. They could, you know, change routes or or eliminate service at any time if it's not profitable, I guess. So there has been, I believe there has been discussions. I don't, wasn't personally involved with any especially with Onyx, but there are, there are, I guess, options if that is something that would like to be revisited.
Okay.
I just quite often see the PC Connect bus going by and I would say their ridership is minimal, if any, on it, heading to and from London. And I, I think we're being part of the problem on climate change and we should not be operating those buses.
Okay, Counselor McDermott?
Yeah, I would note that the E-Sour Tavistock, they have quit their rural routes or whatever they were doing. They got out of the transportation. So I mean, everybody is facing a hard time trying to afford these, but just to note that other municipalities have had to make a really hard choice.
Justin?
Sorry, through the warden, I just wanted to, the E-Sour Tavistock, I think just to note that service actually was not a CT-funded program. That was actually exclusively municipally funded, so a bit different. And they also operated a very infrequent service. They had kind of rotating days where they would operate to different centers. So I think a little bit of a different model than what we are offering now, especially since our revamp in September to be more regular service as opposed to an occasional service on two routes.
Okay, Counselor Duncan?
Thank you through you, warden. I just, I was reading the in the report about the discussion that was had about fare increases and how there's a potential to disproportionately affect lower-income individuals. I was wondering, has Stratford Social Services been approached to help those lower-income individuals possibly with some sort of subsidy to use the service?
So through the warden, so they, Stratford Social Services actually does buy regular passes from, from, for both services through the county. So they contribute through fare services. They, they find it a efficient alternative to taxi vouchers, which I think is what they used to do. So they, they're one of our kind of stable partners who are constantly buying passes for the service.
So if we looked at fare increases, then that would, it wouldn't be quite as tough on those individuals because Stratford Social Services would be carrying that, that burden then for them?
I guess potentially, yeah, that, through the warden, that is one way to look at it. Yeah, we could look at it, you know, fare increases could be done across the board. They could be done to different segments. So there is ways that if a fare increase was, was required, that we could look at implementing that.
I guess I'm just looking at it as, you know, like there's, there's a significant cost to keeping this transit service in, in operation and if we could maybe increase the fares somewhat to help balance some of that out that's coming from the the taxpayer as compared to the user, I, I think that would be a benefit to everyone if we choose to continue to move along with this service.
Okay, Counselor Kastenberg?
I think, you know, I wish to focus on, on what the proposal, the recommended action is in the report. I appreciate that, you know, we have concerns about the economics of, of this service. I actually have a concern about that $6 fare being way too much. I can take a transit in Montreal and Toronto and Kitchener and many, many other places. And I know there's a difference in scale for, you know, 350. So $6 transit fare is actually already starting to push the affordability for some of those who are most vulnerable amongst us. But I want to get away from that. I think that the point of this report and the work of the committee more recently has been to say, we need to hear from the public. We need to hear from the users and from those who have taken the opportunity to use the system. Yes, we have data about performance and potential projections of performance. Let's find out who we're harming here if we're considering discontinuing or significantly altering this, this proposal. I can say quite clearly, you know, when I came in as mayor in 2018, in my very first week, I had a conversation with Mr. Pettipies, who was formerly the MPP for our community and whispered in his ear that we need a transit system in Perth County. And, and he was very aware of that project and did shortly thereafter, it did emerge. And I think that's because a whole bunch of us around the table had advocated for this and, and many other communities in our regional area. We've had it. We've built it. It took a lot of work to build. Let's be honest. It took a lot of staff effort. It took a lot of resolve from council to start this transit system in the midst of a pandemic. But here we are now. We're saying one of the options is sort of final and destructive. And I want to know before I vote in any which way on, on how we proceed, what the rest of the community thinks of that. You know, if, if the community comes out with a decision or, you know, a large number of voices say that we think that this is, is not fruitful, while I'll personally disagree with them, I'll accept that that's the community verdict on this. But at the end of the day, I think we need to hear from people. And so I'm going to support this resolution as I did in our committee, because I think that we need to hear.
Okay, other comments? Counselor Mackenzie?
Just taking one step further. If we had any feedback or information on what's happening in other counties that have this very similar transportation system in effect, like we're not alone on this thing.
I haven't received
nothing.
any feedback. I haven't received any feedback from any individuals in the municipalities either of whether they want the service to continue or not. So unless someone else, unless staff has received any comments from any of the other areas that are doing this, I'm not that I'm aware. Counselor Orr?
I am in support of proceeding with the public engagement like is recommended today. But I, we have to have stable funding. It can't go year by year waiting for the government to give us a grant. It has to be stable funding going forward. That's my comment.
Counselor Trunkowski?
Through you, Warden Nagus. I would concur with the Counselor Kastenberg and Counselor Orr on getting the public input first before making a decision. I guess the second comment, it's maybe anecdotal from personal experience. Yeah, it's 30 years ago already. I worked in the New Lisker area. So it was called Tri-Town Transit. It was a school bus. It went from New Lisk to Haleybury to Cobalt. That was their local transportation system. So one comment is surely if their situation would be similar, they're a rural municipality, albeit in the north. If they could find a way to do it in 1994, surely collectively, we can come up with a solution in 2024 for Perth County. And secondly, my experience in the north was Ontario Northland. They had the Northlander Passenger Rail Service from Toronto length the north back again. There was a time it was discontinued. So I guess to Counselor Kastenberg's point, a system was developed and then economics dictated that the system be discontinued. But now the provincial government's directive is to revitalize activity in the north. So they've reestablished the transportation system to service the north. They're making investment in the Northlander, but in the train, but also the bus system and all the interconnecting transit through Ontario Northland. So the value is there. And if the value is there in northern Ontario, surely the value can be realized here in southern Ontario is my comment. So I'll leave it there for now. Thanks.
Counselor Duncan?
Yeah. I'm also in support of reaching out for the feedback from the, from the individuals who use the service. And I, and then we can continue this discussion once we receive that feedback. And I, I think it goes along with budget discussion says to where we're going to go with this. But like Counselor Orr said, if we're going to go ahead with this, we need to make sure the money's there. So that's where I'm at on.
Hey, anyone else? Deputy Warden Kellam?
Just to refresh my mind again, how are we getting out to the public? It is important.
Yes, so through the warden. So we've got a couple of different avenues. So online surveys, so that would be through our website, social media, directly pushed to users through the Blaze Transit app that we use. And then obviously, working with our municipal partners to get that word spread out, as well as community partners, folks who are regular contributors and users of the service. Printed surveys, again, through, on directly on the buses, municipal offices, through our community partners and their agencies would be the two primary two primary methods that we would look to get those surveys completed. Again, with the three-week period to open and using the expertise of Dylan Consulting to help with the survey design and analysis to help expedite that process as well. So.
Supplemental, I that's enough. I think, how do we get to every household? Like, this is a very difficult and important decision. That's great what you're doing, but I think whether it's by mail to every household, so they have the opportunity to comment. What, what you've done is great, but I still think we need to take it one step forward.
And I'm not sure about, like, we did that in planning that. And I know there was an $8,000 price tag with that.
Yeah.
So I guess that's something council has to consider, whether they want a message to go out to every household and people to comment. I'm not sure how else you get it. The tax bills have already went out. So you can't add it to that, right? And we have a short turnaround window here of month of October. Is that correct?
I threw the warden, yes. To, to get results back to Dylan to do the analysis, we're looking to have that closed out by the end of October. For, based on our committee structure and having our committee report back to council through December 5th, that gives us sufficient but a tight amount of lead time to do all that.
Okay, any suggestions?
I guess we go with that. Hopefully, we get 90 or 95%.
Counselor Kastenberg?
I think the only thing that I have regrets about, about current recommended engagement plan is that we don't have a public meeting about this or or, you know, some kind of forum that people can actually talk to us in person about this. I have a strong hunch colleagues that we're all going to get deluged with emails and so forth, which is just fine. It's part of our work. But I think that the opportunity of having a pivotal meeting where people can have their say is important. Now, that said, I acknowledge that we can use the delegation process in our county council meeting to encourage people to delegate if they wish to, to have their say about this matter. But I still think that we need to be clear about how we focus that desired approach to communication. There will be people who want to talk to us. They want to talk to us face-to-face or in our, in our environs, if you will. And, and so I'm not quite sure what our delegation process procedures are at this point, whether they have to wait until the very specific meeting when we have this matter on the agenda.
Has to be on the agenda. Has to be on the agenda for them to do a delegation.
So, so if that's the indication, then we should probably circle a date on the county council's calendar. I think he did. December 5th was, I think, the date he said. And we should make it plain that people who wish to talk to county council about a decision that's forthcoming with regards to PC Connect should plan to delegate at the December 5th meeting.
There, there will be a press release that will go out too. If that's the decision of council today, that will go out to all the I presume the newspapers, the radio stations, and, and the word will get out that way as well. So, Counselor Mackenzie?
Yeah, I think just further to Counselor Kellam's comments, I think at this stage of the game, a short time period, we have. And I'm not a great advocate of it. Certainly, you know, link on social media, whether it be Facebook or whatever, and make it simple that if they click on it, it takes you to a quick survey. You don't want anything that's very long. And that they can comment on it. And I think, you know, that's about all we can hope for at this stage of the game, really. And, and, you know, like, a good number of Perth County residents, I'm assuming, would catch that.
Counselor Duncan?
How fast will the survey go live, Justin?
So we anticipate the survey would be launched this next week.
Next week?
And we already have have provided some input to Dylan and they are, they are ready to transform that into survey. So you would anticipate that it would go live next week. And sorry, if I didn't answer the question, the warden. In regards to the mail-out option, so I know that was suggested. You know, PC, we have done PC connect mails in the past. It is something we could execute. I have to figure whether the timeframe is sufficient, but that would come with the cost as well.
Counselor McDermott?
I think mailing things out here is wasting your time because of the way that the mail is delivered now. I'm not sure some of those people would get their, would get the information before December, so.
Counselor Orr?
Just going back, the ridership is at about 700 riders a month. There, is there any way we can clarify if those are the same people or they're riding it twice a day or anything like that?
Through the warden, short of riding the buses, because we have a large percentage of our riders who are paying with cash fares, almost 75% of our riders pay by cash. So they, they simply drop their fare in the, in the cash box and ride. So I guess short of, you know, riding the buses and doing some individual accounting, which we could do, that is that's a bit of a difficult track, unfortunately.
Go ahead.
Just my point there is, so it's 700 riders a month. I'm going to just assume that it's going there and back, wherever they're going. That's 350 people. I'm going to assume that those that use transit really do use transit and they probably do it four or five times a week. Now you're talking about less. That is important, but I, that's my curious point. Are we talking 700 different people? Or are we talking about a few hundred? That's what I'd love to get answered.
Okay, other questions or comments? If not, we do have a motion that council receives the PC Connect County CT Rural Route Program Report and that council directs staff to proceed to public engagement regarding the future of the county's rural road transit service. With by Counselor Kastenberg, second by Counselor Smith. All those in favor? Okay, now we're going to move to bylaws. And we do have a very long this morning and that has to be all we stopped. So we have bylaw 4000-2, moving forward, read it first, second, third time, and finally passed this third day of October, 2024. With by Counselor Mackenzie, second by Counselor McDermott. All in favor? Carry. Thanks, Justin. Sorry, I missed that part. Thank you for your report. Okay, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? I have one item. Last Sunday, Counselor Orr, Counselor Mackenzie, Counselor Kastenberg and myself had the honor of going to John Nader King Charles III Coronation Medal acknowledgements. And there were 20 individuals from Perth Wellington region who were honored with the King Charles III Coronation Medal. And this medal is awarded to those who make a significant contribution to our community. There was actually six people from our lower tier of municipalities. And amongst those receiving this medal were, was our very own Perth County paramedic, Mike Grass. Mike has been a dedicated paramedic for 35 years. In addition, he has also served as a firefighter in North Perth. And Mike has shown a strong dedication to serving the people of Perth County, and we are proud to see him receive this recognition. We also had, in North Perth, we had Deborah Ritchie as well. And she has started volunteering very early age. She helps the local charities, the schools, the services. And she's helped, since 2000, she's raised $10 million. So I think this is a lady we all want more here and help us out. She's been a remarkable thing for North Perth. Then from Perth South, we had Mary McIntosh. Mary and her husband John have been foster parents for several years. She's been involved in 4H and Junior Farmers, and she's been the president of Perth County Children's Aid and Perth County Federation of Agriculture. From West Perth, we had Diane Jazeline. She's volunteered for the last 40 years. She's a local Mitchell optimist. She's been involved in the Mitchell Music Festival, the Flowering Match in Mitchell Hall. Match, and Mitchell Hawks, and the Retired Teachers Association. Also from West Perth, we had Donnie Yount, and she has 20 years helping families who have cystic fibrosis. She supports the annual Perth County Walk to Make Cystic Fibrosis History, she's helped with many community activities, she's on the executive for the HOPE Chapter of Cystic Fibrosis Canada, and the organized, she organizes a Christmas 50/50 fundraiser. And from Perth East, we have Jean Smalsky, and she's been, over 20 years, she's been involved with her family and with her pumpkin sales at the end of her driveway there, they have, she is a lifelong member of the Stratford Probus Club, she's a dedicated volunteer and serves as a trustee for the Stratford General Hospital Foundation. So on behalf of council, I'd like to recognize and congratulate all our medal recipients, and thank everyone for the important contributions that they make to Perth County and make it a better place to live. Can't thank those people enough.
Okay, does anyone else have anything on their announcements? If not, then we'll move on to our next item, and that's, we need to go to closed session, so that council move into closed sections, excuse me, closed session at approximately 12:03 a.m. in accordance with section 239 of the Municipal Act, to consider a matter pertaining to labor relations and also a matter pertaining to legal advice. Moved by Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Trunkowski, all those in favor? Okay, we have bylaw 4001-2024 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, the corporation of the county of Perth, and its regular meeting held October 2024 is ready for time on 10/16/2024. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by Councillor Orr, all in favor? Carried. And the last motion of the day is council adjourned at 12:47 p.m. Councillor McDermott, and second by Councillor Willam, all in favor? Thanks, everyone, enjoy the rest of your day.